That's the old meeting, old minutes.
It's kind of an October meeting, so Woodfin Town Council's orders, it's been October 17, 2023. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion, and what I would like to move is that we amend the agenda to move public comment after the presentations.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, so we'll put the public comment, change it from D to F. Put it in place of that. Next item will be the consent agenda. Shannon, you want to explain the consent agenda?
Sure, Mayor. Consent agenda this month was relatively straightforward. We typically always include our regular and close session minutes if there was a close session for the previous one. We also, the second item is a new one, but you're going to see it every month moving forward. That's approval of the tax collection report for the previous month. And there's some changes in statutes, so that is going to be included in the packets we're reviewing. We also have a revised, it's really a revised resolution regarding the single-use plastics. This was, the council adopted a single-use plastics resolution back in August, and then the state subsequently took action through the adoption of their state budget that affected that resolution that we have recently adopted. So this is a revised resolution. Then a resolution expanding our interdepartmental agreement with the league of municipalities. We, the league, the very large majority of our insurance is with the league of municipalities, and we are now moving our employee health insurance to that deal. We are also introducing a new ordinance to Chapter 22, Missland Use of Fences, for the purpose of updating some public safety standards regarding weapons and firearms. It's recommended that if you want to control for that within the municipality, you should have an ordinance that addresses that. And based on some changes to state law, we must first introduce that ordinance, and then wait 30 days before adoption. So the ordinance will come back to the council next month for adoption. And then Ordinance 2023 is just, 2023-023 is just a budget amendment to, for some unanticipated building repair for HBC units in the town hall. So that was in place when we adopted our budget, so we just have a little amendment to make the numbers right up.
Okay, any board member have any questions about any of those items?
Yes, Mayor, I have one question. On the amendment of Chapter 22, on the second page, under B, number, Section 1B, all persons are prohibited from possessing, using, or carrying weapons upon any property owned, occupied, or controlled by the town. We then list some of the facilities. Why did we not list the parks? They're included in this, correct?
They're not.
They're not? If town-owned, town-operated.
They were changes to the state law that specifically defines what recreation facilities where you can restrict concealed firearms, concealed carry firearms. And parks were not, they were specifically excluded.
So we'd have no right to restrict firearms in our parks?
Right. Only certain recreation facilities. So parks, freeways, athletic fields can be controlled against, as can a swimming pool or a basketball court, those kind of programmed recreations.
The pavilions that are reserved and big parties come, we can't prohibit them?
No, playgrounds are good.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
That's it. Any other questions? Do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve it as submitted, Mayor.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? In favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next item is presentation and reports. The first one being the auditor report, and this will be Nancy Lux, CPA from Ray Bumgarner Kingshill and Associates, PA.
All right, well, thank you so much for having me tonight at your town council meeting, and I appreciate that we've been doing your audit. I was just trying to calculate in my head. I think this is the 11th year that we've presented your annual audit and financial statements. So again, we appreciate your, having our firm, Ray Bumgarner Kingshill, do this work for several years. And I know in your packet material, Sherry tells me you all got the PDF, so I don't think, unless you have it open in front of you, I'm going to refer to some page numbers, or if you don't want me to refer to page numbers, just speak in general about the audit and whatnot. I could do that, too. But anyway, again, for, like I said, 11 years that we've been doing the audit, we are presenting an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level opinion that you can attain in your annual audit. There are, you know, no modifications to it, so it's a clean opinion, in other words. And, oh, let me step back. The letter that we also issued in the audit, it was the only letter issued, there were no additional letters for any material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, none of those. The controls over the years have really improved with the size of the organization and proper segregation of controls. So while that's a typical finding we find in smaller towns, you know, Woodfin's blessed to have, you know, the ability to have ample staff and, you know, good segregation between departments. So congratulations on that, because I know you have added quite a bit of staff in the last couple of years to certainly, you know, meet the needs of the town, but also to provide really great controls. The letter that I'm referencing is the letter to those charged with governance, and it describes the audit, what an audit is. There is one new pronouncement that was effective this year called GASB96, or CIBIDA, Service-Based Information Technology Arrangements. Sherry and I found in going over the contracts that you have, these are basically IT contracts, that none required capitalization or met the criteria for recording, similar to that lease standard we implemented last year, which is ongoing, and we'll just have to keep, you know, capitalizing leases as you, you know, enter into new lease agreements each year. So this CIBIDA pronouncement was newly adopted in the current year. Other than that, there were no other new type of accounting pronouncements we had to acknowledge this year. We had no difficulties in performing our audit. We had no disagreements with management. We didn't have to consult with anyone else. We didn't have any other findings or issues. And basically, this letter, if you see it in your materials, describes that about an audit. So again, nothing really major or different, just that CIBIDA comment in that letter. So back to the report, like I said, you had an unmodified opinion, which, congratulations to you on that. And the next section of the report is the MDNA. And I would say if you read any part of your audit report, I would focus on that. That's kind of a combination of all the numbers that I pulled together in doing the audit. It's actually written by your management and gives you a good highlight of the financial highlights for the year, an overview of the funds and what's going on in the funds, from new fixed assets added to new debt that's been entered into. And then it gives you a budgetary highlight at the very end. So that's a really informational and quick read, if you will, compared to the other 71 pages of the audit report, that some is, of which some is fairly dry and, you know, just required standards. In your MDNA, we have a nice colored graph, I just want to point out, and if you look at that, it's on page nine, you'll see that 76% of the town's revenues come from a combination of property taxes and sales and other type of taxes. So, you know, the town is growing, the property taxes are very, very healthy, it provides, you know, over 75%, 76% of the town's revenues. And again, the main expenses of the town, you know, every year, it's people, it's salaries. Public safety is your biggest expense with, department-wise, not all that salary, but, you know, majority of that is salary. Next in line is what, and I wanted to explain this, too, you'll see environmental protection. That's really a combination of the sanitation department and the stormwater department, you know, protecting the environment, that's kind of the category that the LGC explains that, where transportation is your street department. So I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. When I flip to the, it's Exhibit 1 in the financial report, page 14, you just see a really healthy balance sheet. You see large amounts in cash, cash has increased. Basically, again, you know, the town's revenues are well exceeding its expenditures, so the town has a nice, healthy cash reserve. Some of that cash is restricted. That, of course, is due to the unspent bond proceeds. You'll see land and construction and process keeps growing, that's the Greenway and project, you know, which is continuing, at least for the next couple of years, you know, until it's completed. But that project keeps adding to land and other non-depreciating assets at this point in time. We also see on the balance sheet that debt also has increased. There was three new issuances of debt, essentially in the current fiscal year, there was the GEO bonds, 1.5 in GEO bonds, and then two new installment loans. One was for the Street Capital Project Fund, and the other one was for the garbage trucks. When I look at page 15, which is your statement of activities, you see compared to last year, if you were, and these statements are not comparative, unfortunately, so I'm kind of telling you about the comparison, but last year's financial statements, you know, this year's compared to last year, we see a huge difference in the column called expenses, because last year, if you recall, we didn't have any salaries in our expenses in the governmental funds. They were all in a separate fund that the ARPA money funded for those salaries. So that's kind of a big change if you were looking comparatively. Now, overall, of course, you had salaries last year, they were just reported in a different fund. This year, we have salaries, but salaries overall are up about $156,000 town-wide, which is, you know, due to hiring more people, COLA adjustments, and, you know, and the likes of that. Let's see. Flipping to page 19, which is your general fund, kind of comparing original budget, final budget, actual, and this is just the fund, the general fund itself, it's not the government-wide presentation. But what you see there is the town was within budget on all spending categories. You know, the town does a great job of making sure that, you know, before money is spent, that, you know, an amendment is made to make sure that that's been, you know, appropriated for properly in the budget, which is state statutes. A lot of towns do it backward, they kind of get to the end of the year and fix everything, but I know you all do a really good job of making sure before it's spent, you modify the budget if needed. One thing I wanted to point out here on this statement is you see a pretty large transfer to other funds. So the general fund was so healthy this year, it netted out $311,000, but you see an over $1 million transfer to the other funds. That was transferring money to the Street Capital Project Fund and the Greenway Project Fund. So if those transfers hadn't been made, you know, the bottom line on the general fund is basically 1.3 million in revenues. But of course, you know, it transferred to the other funds to, you know, help those projects continue on. So I'm going to just flip, I'm going to skip all the footnotes. The footnotes, you know, you can read through them, they're the standard footnotes, we didn't add any new footnotes this year. The footnotes support the numbers on the Exhibits 1 and 2, the basically balance sheet and income statement. But I'm going to flip to page 52, which is how you all through the year are looking at your numbers each month. It's the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget and actual for the general fund. So this is basically your modified cash, you know, look and what you're looking at each month. Again, you see really healthy revenues coming in from ad valorem taxes, your property taxes, and those haven't changed, the valuation, I mean, hasn't changed since 2021. I'm not sure when the next revalued date is. 2025, okay. But you see growth in those numbers because the town of Woodfin continues to grow, and there's new residential communities and some commercial as well, but there's just growth, you know, everywhere in North Carolina, especially here in Woodfin. And sales taxes also go up along with those property taxes, more people here, more people buying, you know, stuff, and your revenues are just super healthy coming from both those types of taxes. And then we have all of our departments, you know, in pretty good detail. So if you're curious about, you know, how things unfolded, just take a look at that general fund presentation, starting on page 50, what did I say it was, 52. But then again, when we get to page 57, I just wanted to point out again, you know, we have that large transfer, transfers out to the Rec Fund and Street Capital Project Fund. So then the very next page, page 58, and both these funds, let me explain, are just subsets of your general fund. These funds are building capital assets that will eventually be capitalized when those projects are completed, but they essentially are just a little part, they're part of the general fund, they're just accounted for in capital project funds as required, because they're, the period of time to construct these assets is over one year. So that requires, the LGC requires them to be reported in their own separate fund. And everything, you know, looks to be on track in both those capital projects funds. The Street Capital Project Fund, I believe, is that done now? Not yet, I think it's. Okay, I was going to say, it'll be completed within this fiscal year, 2024, and will, you know, go away next year as those streets get capitalized and incorporated into the, you know, the town's fixed assets. One thing that was, oh, let me, okay, before I jump to the compliance section. Page 61, I wanted to point out, that's your analysis of your current tax levy, and the county collects taxes for the town of Woodfin. They do a great job, and overall, the collection rate is excellent. You all have a 99.59 overall percent tax collection rate, so again, near 100, vehicles are always 100, the way now that vehicles are registered with, you know, the state, and you pay your vehicle tax when you register your car. But your other property taxes are, the collection rate is extremely healthy on that as well. And after that, the last section of this report is the compliance section. So again, this year, kind of was a surprise. We had another single audit, this time a state single audit, because when you have state spending of over $500,000, that requires a state single audit. And what happened was, y'all were saving that Powell bill money to, using this Street Capital Project Fund, and there was about six, you spent every dime of your Powell bill money, what was in there from last year plus the current year allocation, and it ended up being spending of $616,000, $616,218. So obviously over the $500,000, and required the state single audit to us, for us to go through all the Powell bill spending and look at all that. But overall, the reports that we issued on that, the state single audit report was clean, there were no findings on that. And then every year, you have a yellow book report, because you spend over $100,000 in state and federal money combined, and that's a required report as well. We have that pretty much every year here. There were no findings in the yellow book report. That's basically compliance, looking at internal controls and all that. So on page 67, there's a summary of the compliance section and the findings, of which we had no findings, again, no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, no compliance issues, nothing like that. And then the last page of your report is the schedule of expenditure of federal and state awards. You just had a tiny bit of federal money, looks like a public safety grant, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and then everything else was the Powell bill spending. So that is your annual audit report, in a very quick little nutshell there. But again, I want to thank Sherry and her staff for their cooperation. It's always a pleasure for us to come out here and have numbers that are, you know, clean and, you know, we're not having to make, you know, I don't even remember how many, did we make any adjustments? I don't think we made, I don't think we made, we made no adjustments this year. I think last year we had one, but this year, yeah, all the numbers were, you know, we had to audit them and put them in the report and all, but we didn't have any material audit adjustments, as we call them, to post. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have any questions? You haven't read it yet, have you?
Yes, I have.
Oh, have you? Okay, all right, well, excellent, I'm impressed, wow.
I think we probably all did, and I'd like to say exactly what I think my peers are saying. Job well done, Sherry, you, there are towns that have all kinds of problems we read about to have two years in a row whistle clean. Thank you so much, that's great.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. And I also want to thank Nancy, her and her firm are super accommodating. Anytime we call with questions or require guidance about county policies that come out or things that arise at the town, they're very responsive and always willing to help. So we really appreciate that. I think up next, we have a clicker, or you can use the board.
Next, we got our reappraisal report from Keith Miller, who's the county tax assessor. Good to see you, bye, Keith.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have some things to share with you, I hope you'll find interesting, and about reappraisal 2025, and how we're moving forward, and what that looks like, some things that we're doing differently. And I'll try to move through it as quick as possible, there's a lot of information I always want to share with you, but I could talk for hours. But I know you love property tax, everybody does, so I don't know why we don't. So, anyway, reappraisal 2025. I first want to remind everyone about what it is property assessment does, and not only for this council, but for your residents of Woodfin, is that I am the county tax assessor, appointed by county commissioners, and I am charged with responsibility, and the state statute, state statute says to list and assess all taxable property in the county, real or personal. That's the charge that's given to me. So, but that's not really the only thing that we do as far as real property. We do, we manage land records, which is ownership and situs of property. Taxable property is personal, licensed motor vehicles, business, real taxable property. All taxable property must be listed with the assessor yearly, all taxable personal property, January 1 of the current year, and all taxable property valued, January, all real property valued as of January 1 of the reappraisal year. We administer the special programs, exemptions, present use value, those type of things which are set forth by the state in North Carolina. And we also revalue and maintain the value on 130,000 parcels of real property every four years, which does include all property within the town of Woodfin. So a little facts for you. Buckham County as a whole, 130,000 parcels of real estate, we manage 8,900 business accounts, 12,000 personal property accounts, and 227,000 motor vehicles. And yes, we put a value on every one of those 227,000 motor vehicles every year. So there's a lot there to do. What does that mean? FY24 taxable, 44 billion in real property value, 2.9 billion in personal property value, 1 billion in public service, 3 billion in motor vehicles, for a total of 51 billion in taxable value for FY24, for the county. So what does that mean to you? You are part of that. So Woodfin alone, 4,108 parcels of real estate, 387 business accounts, 354 personal property accounts, 6,115 motor vehicles, for a total taxable value in FY24. 1.15 billion in real property, 55 million in personal, 13 million in public service, 73 million in motor vehicles, for a total taxable value of 1.3 billion for your FY24. So I hope you find that interesting. It's always, a lot of people done, maybe you've never saw the breakdown of where your taxable value comes from and, you know, where you collect taxes from. It's good to hear that, your auditor just said, about 75% of your revenue comes from property tax, so it is really important to you. So reappraisal 2025, every county in the state of North Carolina is required to do a reappraisal at least every eight years. Buckham County, we've been on a four-year cycle for many, many years, for many reasons. It keeps the value more in line with the market, it also keeps us from having adjustments in your public service value, among a few other things that, you know, we won't get in too much detail of. But it is important. Real property, which is all your land, building structures, improvements, that's what's involved in your reappraisal. And the North Carolina law says that all real property during a reappraisal year should be 100% of market value, based on the most qualified sales that occurred leading up to that date. Reappraisal 2025, completed by a mass appraisal methodology. What is that? We'll talk a little bit about it. But here's what I want you to know. If you hire another private appraiser to come to your home, they do the same thing as we do. We do the same thing as they do. We use the same methods, we just use them a little bit differently. Sales comparison approach, cost approach, or the income approach, is all the approaches that every appraiser uses, whether you're private or where you're in government. Fee appraisal versus mass. A lot of people want to know, well, why do we do mass appraisal? Why don't you just do a fee appraisal on every house? And what I mean by fee appraisal, private appraisal, maybe someone, you know, or yourself recently bought a home, you had to have an appraisal on it. That appraiser focused on your house alone. Three comparables gave you a value of just your home. We focus on groups of properties. It is the only way that we can physically, financially, logistically, complete 130,000 parcels valuation in a little over a year's period of time. So if we did do single property appraisals, what would that look like? We would need approximately 270 people to do it, and I don't think we're going to get that many. So we do it with 10 versus 270. So we value all the 130,000 parcels in the county with 10 appraisers and a small analyst group to be able to complete that. What's next? Reappraisal 2025. I've told you a little bit about who we are, what we do, so let's talk about how we're moving into reappraisal 2025. We have embarked on the very robust outreach program for this reappraisal. We're here, we've been to other municipalities, counties, homeowners associations, festivals, community markets, we're out in the community, meeting people, talking to them about reappraisal, about property tax, helping them better understand what we do, how we do it, and what does it mean to them. Because what we find is that come January of 2025, when I mail you that notice and you get it in the mail, and you say, what's this? You know, why is Keith sending me this? What's this mean? We would like to talk to you before then. We would like to prepare you for that. Everybody in the town of Woodfin needs to be prepared for that, and understand when you get it in the mail, what it means, and what your next steps could be when you get that notice. Community engagement, as you can see, we've been out to the festivals, we've been to the community markets, we've been on Carolina Spotlight, Carolina, on WLOS, talking about different things that we're doing. If you're a property owner, maybe you recently received one of these cards. We mailed about 80,000 of these postcards to property owners within the county, so if you own residential property, hopefully you got one of these. Because part of our initiative for 2025 is to improve our data. Better quality data produces better reapraisals. So we have embarked on the campaign to improve that. So we mailed these 80,000 postcards to all the owners and said, here's some data that we show for you in our system. If it is not correct, then please tell us where it's not correct. Help us get better data so we can do a better job for you. So all you had to do is fill out the card, mail it back to us, or either you can go online and update your property records online, so we will know a little bit better about what you've got. We just flew, I didn't fly, the company that we contract with just flew the entire 660 square miles of Buckham County. They give us a oblique shot, which you see on the far right, we can see at a 45-degree angle your house, we can see the front door, the side, the rear, so we can do visual inspections from our desk. We can also get a bird's eye view, and we get on the far left also a footprint of your home from that flyover. That footprint, then, we use to do data analysis. Again, improving data. Look at the picture on the far right, you will see a house there with a two-car garage, the picture in the middle, same house with two two-car garages. But if you look at the sketch on the far left, what was reported to us is that homeowner never told us they built that garage. So when we did the flyover, we laid the footprint over top of that building, it comes back to us, gives us feedback that something's wrong. So our appraisers then go to the property, we discover that there was for sure another garage built that we never knew about. So again, it's about improving data, doing a better job. The other thing we're getting ready to do is street-level photography. We did this last reappraisal, and we'll do it again, starting in November, December this year. You may see this car in your neighborhoods. We will drive entire town of Woodfin along with 1,878 miles throughout the county and capture 360-degree photography of street level, along with LOTAR data and other things that we use this for. This photography, we can measure from, we can do visual inspections, it's high-quality photography, so we can do roof inspections, site inspection, we can see your house number on the house. There's a lot of different things that our appraisers. There's a lot of different things that our appraisers can use this for from their, from their desk. The newest thing that we're doing, this will be the first for 2025, automated valuation modeling. For 90,000 parcels of residential property, this program values 90,000 houses every night. So today, I received value new on 90,000 parcels that was new from yesterday. So what does this system do, does? Takes all the sales transactions from yesterday, recalculates them during the night, and gives me a new value for your home today. So this will also give us feedback on growth, hot areas within the county, what the change are over different areas of the county and so on. But here's an example for you. This house was assessed in 2021 for 426,000, sold in 2021 for 470,000. This automated valuation model says today in 2023, the house should be valued at 612,000. And if the appreciation continues at what it is by 2025, the house should be valued at 656,000. So we will use this data also to audit our appraisers internally. When they see, if they produce a value on this house of 400,000, and we see the valuation model produce 656, that's a flag for them that they must go look to see why that the valuation is so different. Improved technology, we did a website redesign. We added this as part of what we call the Property Owner's Toolkit. You can get this at tax.buckhamcounty.org. Very simple. You can go there to the search bar, type in your name, your address, your PIN number, whatever it is you've got related to your property. It'll pull back your property. It'll give you a picture of your house. It'll give you the map so you can see a plot of your lot, and it'll give you all the associated data. Couple new things that we added, if you see in the ribbon, there's two things there, one called Comper, one called Community. Community will give you statistics. If you zoom in on your community that you live in, it will tell you all the recent sales, what's the sales ratio, what's been the growth over the last reappraisal, what's the new transactions, what's the building permits. It'll tell you all kinds of things that's going on in your community in an effort to better inform you about what's going on so when I send you a value in 2025, these tools will help you go and do your own homework to see, was that a good value I sent you or not. Comper, also, you can go here, it'll pull up three comps for you for your individual home and give you an estimated value. Our new app, you can get that same technology, the Property Owner Toolkit now, on your smart devices. Download the app from the App Store or Android users. MyValueBC. MyValueBC will give you access to all that data at your hands. You can pay your bill, you can appeal your property, you can update your data, you can send us emails, anything that you can do on tax.buckhamcounty.org, you can do from this app on your device. Now, I'll tell you, a lot of people says, what did this do for you, Keith? What we knew is that we have a lot of residents in the outer parts of the county who do not have internet service, so they don't have the ability to see what you're seeing. But what we know is that a greater percentage of those do have smart devices. They do have a cell phone. So we made that available to them through their cell phone, not just through the internet. They can now get it on their cell phone and have the same service as anybody else. Same ability to access the data and appeal their value or pay their bill, if that's what they would like to do. Appeals. We, the newest thing with appeals is that we did, we have joined with Land and Sky Realtors Association and Piscopo Legal. We had appeal clinics throughout the county. The one closest to you is at the library in the downtown Weaverville. We had an appeal clinic there where we went, we took Realtors with us. Realtors volunteered their time, sat with property owners, talked about the value. If you had questions about your market value or how to appeal it, or how you should do that, or data that you need, then those Realtors were there as volunteers to be able to help you. Every property owner in this county has a right to appeal. If you don't understand that value when you get it, then appeal it. That is your right by statute. And that's why you were given that right, is because you need to question us. Sometimes you just need to appeal it to say, explain it to me, Keith. You know, let's sit down and talk about it. Maybe it's too high, maybe it's too low. You know, there's a lot of things that can happen. But it is every property owner's ability to do that and have that access to us through the appeal process. You should also know, the appeal process does not stop with us, does not stop with me. If you don't, if you disagree with our findings in the end, you can go to the local Board of Equalization Review. If you disagree with our findings, you can go to the State Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. If you disagree with ours, you can go to the appellate court. So there's, there's many places that you can go. A lot of people come to us under the appeals and say, well, Keith, I know what your decision's going to be. Well, it's not my final decision, okay? You can move forward and question my decision through another board who's there to help you. Reappraisal, Ms., there's one here that I want to point out. Well, we'll go through them all, but one I'll focus on. Reappraisal's not a method to increase tax revenue. Most people will say, Keith, why are you doing a reappraisal? You're only wanting more tax money. You're doing it because you only want more revenue. That is, that cannot be more untrue, okay? Reappraisal is about equalization. Different areas of Woodfin is going to grow at different rates. So what happens is that then that balance of who's paying what gets out of line, and reappraisal brings it back in line. The revenue comes from you. What you want your taxes to be comes from this council here, not me. Property assessment does not set the tax rate. That's your job. When the assessor states an average increase of 20%, does that mean all your taxes will increase? What happens is that come January of 2025, the media is going to come to me and say, Keith, what is the median change in value for Buckham County? If I say 20%, what immediately most people thinks is, my taxes are going to go up 20%. You know, as a council, that's probably not true, because as revenue, as value increases, typically rate decreases in order to keep the revenue at where you want it to be. Some people's taxes may even come down and their value maybe went up. So that's something there that people should pay attention to. The appeal process can be controversial. Absolutely not. It is not, although the appeal word, I think, sometimes sounds that way to people, it is not a controversial process. We will be happy to sit face to face with anyone and talk about their value and explain it to them and give them any information that we may have related to their property. Schedule, from now on through December of '24, we will continue to do what we're doing. Door-to-door visits, aerial photography, property record updates, the community engagement to continue the reappraisal. January of 2025 is the effective date for the reappraisal. So January 30th around the 1st of February, you should receive your notice of value. April of 2025, the Board of Equalization and Review will convene and adjourn for the appeals. June 30th of 2025, the FY26 tax rate you will set, and the county commissioners will set for the county. And then August of '25, we will mail the bills to the property owners based on their new value. One thing here I want to point out, mostly for your residents, this council probably understands this, is that I do one part of this equation, value. That's all I do. Most people look at me again and say, you made my taxes go up. But I'm not in control of that. This council's in control of what revenue that you want. I'm in control of the value on the property. The rate comes from the county municipalities, and that's what calculates the tax bill in the end. There we go. That's as quick as I could do it. Questions?
I've got one. First, though, just a word of appreciation, your website is excellent. The, I, like I think probably every other lawyer in town, is on it on a daily basis. It's a critical tool, and I mean, can't say enough about how useful that is, but...
Thank you very much.
Then the question I don't think you're probably going to answer is, are you willing to project out what kind of increase we're looking at so far?
No.
Okay. I thought it was worth a shot.
It was worth a shot, yeah. Best thing ever where I go, everybody asks the same question. What do you think the change is going to be? And my answer to that is that look around your neighborhood. What is your neighbor's buying and selling property for? There's what drives your value, okay? So that's exactly what we will use to determine what your value is, should be, is based on those sales transactions.
I got one.
Yeah?
Right now, it seems like about every property gets in a bidding war. If somebody's willing to pay 50,000 more for a piece of property than it's actually valued at, and you said earlier that you go by what it was sold for, that doesn't necessarily mean that property's worth 50,000 more. Do you take that into consideration?
Yes. Not every sale is what we call a qualified sale.
Right.
Okay? One sale does not create the market. If there's multiples at that kind of value, then we would leave it. Because now we say, not that one house that was in a bidding war for it showed that increase, but there was more in the neighborhood that showed that same level of value. But there's many of them that we do not include in the analysis. Therefore, they don't affect your value in the end. Okay? Anything else? On the floor?
So you mentioned the mass-based approach is fair.
And I'm sorry, we don't usually take questions on the floor, but...
It's okay.
The lights are on, let's go down.
I'm happy.
Okay.
Not excited.
You want to...
Okay.
That's up to the council. I don't care. I'll answer whatever.
So you mentioned the mass-based approach versus the, you know, individual-based approach, where you need a lot more folks. When you're taking a swath of an area, is it like a geographical, you take a quarter-mile or something, or how do you assess properties across a large area?
Yeah, so we, we will create currently, from the 2021 reappraisal, we have 2,500 polygons drawn across the county that what we call a neighborhood. And within that neighborhood is the properties in which we use to value. So it could be 50, it could be 500. But it, what matters is that the data from the market starts helping us define what those market areas are, and that's where we then, we start delineating those areas out. We have, so you know, contracted with a contractor. Splice evaluation is contracted with us to help us do exactly what you're talking. We're redrawing every one of those 2,500 neighborhood boundaries for the 25, 25 reappraisal, and that is statistically driven, and it's driven by market value and where we draw those. Like, if you live in a defined subdivision, those lines are somewhat already drawn for us, because we compare only the homes within that defined subdivision. But when you get out in more rural areas, it becomes a little bit more difficult. Yeah? Sure.
Any more questions from the board?
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Next item is the Town Manager Republican.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to make this brief, or as brief as I can. There are a couple items I want to elaborate on that were kind of unique to this last month. And I typically begin my manager report by reporting on any new contracts or purchase orders that have come in the last 30 days. So we have two relatively small ones this month. Nuanced healthcare, which is kind of a funny name, that's actually the police department transcription software. They started in the healthcare industry doing transcriptions, and that's why the name is healthcare. We are not contracting with healthcare providers, but, but that's what that is for. It's a very small little contract that we just renewed. Motorola for just under $8,000. We were very fortunate to get some lightly-used radios from the city of Asheville, 14 radios. These are not inexpensive to purchase if we were to buy them new. So we are very fortunate to get these. It does require some equipment and some installation costs, so that's what that particular contract is for. I'm going to take the rest of my departmental updates a little bit out of order, what we normally do, so that I can save some of the items at the end for a little bit more discussion, just because, like I said, we had some interesting things happen this, this month. So to begin with police, our lieutenant position assessment is set now for October 26th. Council members may recall, we promoted our former lieutenant, Christopher Ammons, to the position, the new position of captain, and so now we have that vacancy that we're working on filling. We are also continuing to interview, and we've had some positive interest in our patrol positions, where we currently have some vacancies and running, running some background checks for a couple individuals for that as well. The basement outfit is ongoing. We got a little surprised when we submitted our building permit from Buckham County and learned that we're going to, in addition to the building permit, we have to apply for mechanical and electrical permits as well, so we're working through that right now. Our Public Safety Day was another of our community policing events that occurred this last Saturday on October 14th. This was one of those community policing pandemic casualties. This, not unlike National Night Out, kind of got put on hold during the pandemic years, and now police departments across the country are starting to kind of revive these activities and these events. So this was our first post-pandemic Public Safety Day, and our attendance, we were pleased with, somewhere between 150 and 200 attendees. Now, that's over the course of the entire event, not just at one time. So we felt like that was, was positive, but we think that we can improve upon that next year. Just a little preview, next month, we're going to report on some traffic stop data. Council may recall that they asked staff to begin collecting this data. We should have about five months, maybe a little bit more of that data to share next month, so we look forward to bringing that to you soon. Departmental updates, public works, facilities, business as usual, not much to report on. Not unlike the basement outfit, we had a little challenge with our building permit, but that's all worked through now, and hopefully that work will begin very soon. We are still hoping to have that completed by the end of the year before the really severe weather arrives. Planning, mostly focusing on code amendments and the comp plan. We had a code, some code amendments last month and I think the month before. This month, it's later on the agenda, Ricky's going to get over that. This is what we sort of call a housekeeping or cleanup amendment. It's really looking at relatively minor updates and clarifications to certain sections that are listed here. Next month, we will bring a text amendment addressing standards for accessory dwelling units. Now, some of that will be new content, so that, that is a little bit different than what we're doing later tonight. The comp plan, the draft is currently in review. We've already received and offered feedback on the two biggest sections of the comp plan, the modules. We've received, I think, a little bit more information, so staff and the steering committee will be reviewing that this week, providing the consultants some feedback. And then I believe next week, I hope next week, we will be posting the draft plan for public review. That will be posted for two weeks to give members of the public the opportunity to review and weigh in. We will, of course, let council and members of our advisory committees know. I would not wait until late in November to, you know, review that and offer any feedback or comments. So once it gets posted, I would encourage council and anybody interested to go ahead and take a look at that, share your ideas or any of your input early, so we can be sure to incorporate that into any revisions moving forward. Once the public review portion is done, it will move on to the Planning Board of Adjustment, which will review it at their November 7th meeting, and then the plan is to have this before this council, November 21st, so next month.
Shannon, I'm getting ahead by a month, but the ADUs, are we anticipating only allowing those in residential districts?
Yes.
And so because we have our short-term rental prohibition in residential districts, is it, are we expecting that ADUs will not be allowed to be used as short-term rentals?
I believe that's correct. Yes, Ricky is...
In the entire town? Okay. Thank you.
May I ask one question? How are we going to notify the public of the, the draft to review?
It will be, we'll do our typical Facebook posting, our social media, we'll push it out on social media, we'll put it on our sign. We will do an email, you know, to, to everybody that we have contact information for, and, you know, hopefully word of mouth that'll spread.
Thank you.
Stormwater, I think we're going to have more discussion about stormwater tonight, so I'll keep this brief, but the volume of utility payments and the questions are still pretty high. We're still getting a fair number of calls and people walking in to pay their bills, but it is now beginning to slow down, which is a bit of a relief, to be honest. The work to process the utility has been more than we anticipated, so it's put a bit of a burden particularly on our front desk staff, who have been fielding the large majority of, of these questions and payments. To date, we've received 24 appeals that will need to be investigated. This was not unexpected. We anticipated appeals. I don't think this number is high. I actually think it's pretty low. And I'm happy to say that at cursory glance, these appeals appear to be pretty sound, or the questions that they're raising are sound. You know, most, the, the most common appeal is questioning the calculation of impervious surface. So that will require a little bit of field work. We'll have to go out, remeasure those areas, check what kind of material it is, and then we'll adjust as needed. as needed. So this could result in some reduction in, in some fees.
Shannon, was those mostly commercial or about 50/50?
I think it's probably mostly residential.
Mostly residential.
There may be some commercial in there, but I think the majority are residential. And to date, we received a little over half of the estimated program revenue. There, there's still time to make payment. So if folks haven't paid yet, there's, we've got another 60 days before the town will take additional action. Moving on to parks, we are getting ready to start some design work on the Silverline Park restroom and master plan update. We had a very interesting meeting with a prefab restroom manufacturer last week. It does seem to be more and more common across the country. We're finding these manufacturers who are focusing on public facilities that are not just low maintenance, but meant to be very, very durable. Now, this low maintenance and durability comes at a cost. And, but we have experienced some fairly significant repair work to our restroom. So we want to kind of carefully consider what can we anticipate in typical repairs and maintenance versus what a facility like one of these that we previewed might be able to offer us. So it's going to be a little bit of a, you know, a balancing act and figure out what is the best fit for us. I'm not sure it's the product we previewed, but it was really interesting to see what's being done these days. Solicitation for bids for the Riverside Park and wave are being, are still being planned for October. It's, we've pushed it to the third week in October now, rather than the second, for no other reason than just trying to optimally time permit, receiving permits with the, the bids and the contract evaluations. So we thought, man, one week won't, will allow us to stay on track. So. And then, I also want to highlight a trip that a delegation from Woodfin took to Columbus, Georgia, to view their Riverside Park and wave feature. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the folks who helped support that, the TDA, the Buncombe County Sports Commission, and French Broad River Academy, who provide the van transportation. It was a very worthwhile, very informative trip. And so this is one of the things that I wanted to just highlight a little bit for the council's benefit. So here we are, in the van, French Broad River Academy van, on our way to Columbus. Don't be alarmed at safety concerns of us taking a selfie while we're driving. We're actually stopped in Atlanta traffic, so we thought the best of the moment and, and take a selfie. So here we are. A number of our delegation traveled separately, did not travel in the van. They met us down there, but those, those of us who just wanted to be passengers on a trip, we just jumped in the van, and it was, it was a good time, good conversation the whole way there and back. We had a very diverse delegation. We had represent, representatives from town staff and council. Council member Thornton joined us on this trip. We had representation from the Tourism and Development Authority, Buncombe County Parks and Recreation Staff, the Towns, Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee. In fact, we had two members from the advisory committee. The executive director of Riverlink joined us. The Asheville Buncombe Sports Commission folks joined us down there. And Taylor's Wave Event Management Task Force. So this is the town's newest task force, and we had several members join us from the task force as well. So, oops, I'm going to back up. So we had the opportunity to meet with a number of different folks from Columbus, different officials representing different agencies and departments, including Uptown Columbus, which is sort of a, sort of a downtown business association, but really a 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(6) that are tasked with managing all of the events along the river. A pretty daunting task, and they've been at it for a while, so they had some really good information to share. We also met with an individual from the W.E. Bradley Company. Columbus is very fortunate that they have a very strong and philanthropic corporate partners. So these corporate partners not only helped fund the riverfront revitalization, that giant capital project that they did a couple decades ago, but also with the, some of, underwriting some of the events. So the event that we went to witness was the ICF World Championship Freestyle Canoe, or Canoe and Kayak Event. They tied, they coordinated that with a sport, or excuse me, a music festival that happened on the weekend. So as the sporting event was wrapping up, the music festival was ramping, or excuse me, while the sporting event was completing or wrapping up, the music festival was ramping up. So they kind of seamlessly moved from one to the other. Just that week of events was, they shared with us $1.8 million. So almost none of that coming from the city of Columbus. That is all corporate partners and other, other stakeholders who have a role. Uptown Columbus, of course, helped fund it. But really, really interesting model that they shared. We also met with folks from Visit Columbus and the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Columbus Sports Council, and representatives from the National Sports Commission, and then the Whitewater Express Outfitter. Another very unique thing about Columbus is when the city acquired, or Uptown Columbus with the city, acquired the mill property that had the two dams on the river, they acquired some very interesting land rights that went back to the mid-1800s. And so that allowed them to actually own and control two and a half miles of the river. That's pretty unique. I haven't heard of any other city who had that kind of control. We don't, most cities don't. We control the land that we own on the bank, but we don't necessarily control what happens in the water. So, so they were in a unique position there. They have a single outfitter that does all of the rafting trips on that river. So here we are, of course, meeting with all of these individuals and getting a plethora of information was, was really enlightening. But we were also there to watch the ICF World Championship Freestyle Event, at least some of it. I, it was unfortunate, we couldn't watch more, but some of the most exciting events were being held while we were meeting with people. But it was just the way it worked out. You can see the river, the Chattahoochee River here. When they removed those dams, it unleashed these recreation opportunities and kind of turned the river, or allowed the river to resume its sort of natural course, which included some whitewater. That is an actual natural whitewater feature. That is not a man-made feature. But our wave will, will look and operate very similar to that. This is also a dam-controlled river, so they have to coordinate, events like this have to be coordinated with the energy company as they release the water. So it was, it was really interesting to see it at low level and then high level. The slide on the left, or the photo on the left, is early in the competition. So you can see the crowds not very robust yet. This was the juniors' day. So, and this was, I think, early heats, so it wasn't even, you know, the finals. But nevertheless, still very interesting to watch. And then as the days went, as the competition progressed, the skill level got higher and higher until you get to the finals. And you see on the photo on the right, that's Dane Jackson, who was the gold medal winner in the freestyle event, and also representing America. This was an international, very international event. We certainly had folks representing the US, but we had others, other athletes from Canada, Japan, Finland, Ireland, Great Britain, Australia, all over the world. It was really, really impressive and neat to see. I, I should pause here, too, to say, Asheville has amazing whitewater athletes. I came to find out, just at this event, which is for an international world championship event, it's a relatively small field, we had three people from the Asheville area competing in this event, at least three, maybe, maybe more. There were also judges and other commentators, folks, who were also from this area. We have a very strong paddling culture here. And we learned that folks who, these athletes who live out west or up north, travel to the southeast in the winter because our water is warmer. So they will come down here where they can paddle year-round. So we have opportunity with our whitewater wave that I think we probably haven't even fully recognized yet. So. Oh, something happened. There we go, back. Oh, how did this? Sorry. Well, I'll fix this in a moment. Well, anyway.
There it is.
There it is. Okay. So here we are. Now, you can see the crowd's really grown. This is the, I think, getting close to the women's and men's finals. You see, they have a lot of streaming and judging's going on. You have on the photo on the left, you've got the big video screen that spectators can watch. And you can, you might see the Great Britain flag on there to kind of tell you who was running at the moment. And, you know, you have the leaderboard. It was, it was really, it was really, really interesting. And for myself, somebody who knows next to nothing about paddling and this competition, I mean, I was riveted. I mean, it was amazing. And the skill level was amazing, and what these people can do in those little boats is amazing. So it, I think there, like I said, there's, there's a whole lot of potential that we might be able to unlock. And then you can see the photo on the right, it just gives you a better view of the, the crowd. I will say, this, this venue was small. Like, it was not a big grandstand. It was not a big space for people to gather, which, thinking about Riverside Park, we have just as much, if not more, viewing area than Columbus, Georgia did. So I think we're well-designed to be able to accommodate an event like this. So, some key takeaways, all of these conversations, both with the party that we were traveling with, and then these folks from Columbus, some things I just wanted to share. And I, I kind of shared some of this with our delegation and summarized it, and they helped me kind of summarize it here. First, we're going to be starting small. We're not going to jump, we're not going to open this wave and immediately host the ICF freestyle international competition. It's probably going to be smaller local events, regional events to begin with, as our infrastructure grows. And when I say infrastructure, I'm talking not about utility infrastructure, I'm talking about hotels, restaurants, campgrounds, retail, you know, all of the things that visitors and athletes would be frequenting or taking advantage of if they were coming to our area. It was very emphasized that we should pay close attention and focus on safety and cleanliness. These really affect the visitor experience, and they can't be underestimated. Money isn't everything. Columbus was very fortunate. They have a lot of support on that front. But motivated partners are equally valuable, if not more valuable. You give somebody enough motivation and interest, and they can move mountains. So they, they were also fortunate to have folks like that on their team. Appeal and function of the park for local residents ensures great function and authenticity for visitors. So one of our folks that we met with summarized it as, you build your park for your locals, and new visitors will respect that and appreciate that. You know, you want it to be an authentic, real place for your local people, and then they'll, they'll be able to take advantage of that as well. You want to support the athletes. These athletes live a somewhat nomadic lifestyle. They might live out west, come to the southeast in the summer. They might go from Columbus, Georgia, up to Asheville, over to Chattanooga. They're going to be moving around. So having places for power hookup, campgrounds, showers, things like that, that these athletes will use, was, was recommended. Recreation opportunities can be unlocked with dam removal. We're in the very, very early stages of any dam removal conversations with the Craggy Dam and MSD. They are pursuing that feasibility study. If we're fortunate enough for that, to see that dam come out someday, there's a whole lot that can be considered, that can expand on what we're contemplating with WGB. Historic preservation is really valuable in creating a unique sense of place. Columbus had a number of old mill buildings. The earlier slide that shows us meeting with folks at Uptown Columbus, that was in one of the power generator buildings, not the production buildings. Those larger production buildings have now been adaptively reused into condos. It's, it's a little bit of mixed use, retail and office uses there as well, mostly condos. Beautiful, preserving that history while also bringing in new life to the area. We will need to work to offset the negative impacts of gentrification. There is a whole lot of wonderful things that come with riverfront revitalization, but there are some negative consequences that can happen as well. So what we're doing now, by strengthening our partnerships with, you know, affordable housing providers and other service providers, hopefully we'll pay dividends down the road, and it'll keep Woodfin well-balanced and healthy moving forward. And then environmental restoration and economic development definitely go hand in hand. These are not mutually exclusive. If you focus on cleanliness of the water and restoring the habitat, that's going to pay dividends for economic, it's going to, you know, catalyze some economic development. And that economic development is probably gonna also benefit from a clean and healthy river at the same time. So. So that is my summary of this trip, this event. And I'm just going to move on unless there are any questions. Very brief update, under the administration department, our second ever, well, second new administration newsletter went out last week. I think it should be in everybody's mailbox by now. It was supposed to be the summer newsletter. It got out a little bit late. We used a contractor this time. We produced it ourselves, you know, printed it, folded it, added addresses, did all of the mailings ourselves with the first one. That was a lot of work. It was not, I mean, it, the cost of the color printing, the mailing, all of that, we realized that a vendor could probably do it at, you know, take all that work off us for about the same price, and it did turn out to be the case. There is a cost associated with this, but we have received some really positive feedback, both on the last one and this one already. So it does seem to be something that the community appreciates. We toyed with the idea of maybe one paper mailing and one digital, or a couple digital at different times in the year. You know, it's something that I think we can talk about more when we discuss the budget. But I do think a lot of folks in our community appreciate that, that paper copy. And I think it's meaningful to a lot of folks, and, and they find it useful. So. And then my last departmental update is on the Town Hall Town Center project. Earlier this month, our steering committee met for the fifth time to do what we described as a program deep dive. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And then the steering committee, their next meeting will be at the end of this month. And it's what our consultants are calling design reconciliation, which I really think is just design refinement. So it's just tweaking the, the design that we currently have, addressing any outstanding last-minute concerns. So here is a slightly revised version of the master plan that the consultants reported on last month. And there are a few things about this that I want to emphasize. They, they covered a lot of the process. And what I want to talk about tonight is just highlighting some of the steering committee goals, and how this master plan reflects those goals. So first, we wanted to keep Roy Pope Park intact. We recognized how well-used that park is. And there were different versions of this plan that relocated the park. We always kept the park, but in some cases, it got redesigned and relocated, or amended in some way. But the committee made the decision that we didn't want to change the park, out of fear that if you start to mess with it, you're going to start to, you know, mess with what makes it special and attractive to our current community. And so we are leaving that somewhat alone. Now, it's not to say it might not change a little bit, but generally speaking, it will be kind of left in its current location and condition. We also wanted to prioritize community space, both indoor and outdoor. So we are hoping, currently, the program includes like a community classroom, a community meeting room. We've talked about ways that we can double up the council chamber so that it can be used for larger events. And then also looking at some additional outdoor space. So you see the, the large courtyard in the middle that can be used to support, support community events, community gatherings, and other, you know, other community partners might be able to use that space for different things. And we felt that that was pretty important. As well as adding walking opportunities, we recognized how many walkers we have around here. And Woodfin as a whole doesn't have a lot of great walking opportunities. And so we wanted to make sure that we not only preserved, but enhanced what we had here, and hopefully connect people to more walking opportunities off of Town Hall property in the future. to more walking opportunities off of Town Hall property in the future. We also looked to prioritize the building placement, putting it closer to the street and sort of hiding or de-emphasizing the parking and other service areas to the rear. So we want that nice building, that pedestrian orientation along the street, have a nice attractive streetscape, hopefully a nice sidewalk that is comfortable for walking, that will eventually connect to more sidewalk. And, and then also about the building, it was very important, and this is what the community, or excuse me, the Steering Committee did earlier this month, which was right-size the building program. So the consultants reported last month that our initial building was going to be 23,000 square feet or some number like that. That was a little premature to report. That, we do not think we need a 23,000 square foot building. And the Steering Committee challenged some of those assumptions and, and council members too appropriately challenged some of those assumptions about town growth, staff growth, you know, wouldn't, staff wouldn't necessarily grow at the same rate as the town, even if the town continues to grow at the rate that it has been. But we'll probably level out. We also looked at really what was absolutely necessary from a program standpoint. What do we really need to have a functioning government? What, if anything, was included in the program that might be classified more as a want than a need? So we carefully, critically looked at that. We also shrunk some of the spaces that were dedicated. So, you know, what is an appropriately sized office? How do we design some of this office space, maybe to be more flexible? Or instead of having, you know, six, 200 square foot offices, can we have two 200 square foot offices or 150 square foot offices? And then a larger co-working space? So these were all things that we discussed and shared and, you know, explored with our consultants. So, building, as a result of that deeper dive, the building shrunk in size to somewhere closer to 16,000 square feet. We're still very far from knowing exactly what the layout of the building's going to be, where the offices are going to be, how much space is this going to be. The, the purpose of this analysis was to get an idea of how much square footage should we be planning for? And where should we be optimally locating that square footage? So the area that you see in the bright white, not the dashed box, but the other three kind of sections, that, that is very similar to what the consultants shared. But what might not have been clear is that some of the square footage that the consultants were referring to in the last month included two stories on some of this footprint. And what we're saying is, you know, maybe to start, we don't need to be two stories. We can be one story. Scale it back to something closer to 15,000, 16,000 square feet. But let's not burden future administrations with, with having to do what we're doing, figuring out how do we grow, how do we, how do we finance this, how do we do this? We want to make it easy that they can expand in the future. So we've talked with the consultants about, you know, designing it in such a way that you can add a story or add a wing or do things of this nature. So I am almost positive that if we are able to move forward with this project, it will not look exactly like this, but that the building placement should fall within that footprint somewhere. So it might be smaller, it might not have the wing, it, you know, you know, we just don't know yet. So there's a lot of work still to be considered there. And then lastly, we wanted this plan to plan for or accommodate future community services. So more and more Town Halls or Town Centers are co-locating other services on their property, if there's room for it. We did identify, that's the dashed area, potential building site for a future community partner. So this might be something like an after-school program or a childcare center or a recreation center, something of that nature. Again, we have no idea. This is not programmed. This is not part of any initial consideration unless somebody came to the table ready to fund it and build it. But at least we know where it would go. So if somebody in our community approaches us with this need, we have the opportunity to help support that. And that concludes my Town Manager Report. Happy to answer any questions about Town Hall or anything else in the presentation. Thank you. I know that was a little more detail than I usually do in a manager report, but we have some exciting stuff to share, so.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, moving on to new business. Have a public hearing on ordinance 2023.
Sorry, we, we're going back to public comment now. Speaking of a public comment.
Where we going to do it last?
Oh, I thought we moved it to after presentation.
Till after presentations.
So we're going to do it now and then we'll do this.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Uh, if anyone has anything, I don't think anybody signed up.
We've got one person that's.
Got one person. Okay, public comment, and the first one is Ann Brown. If you'd come up to the, give us your name and where you live, and then proceed, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I should have brought my timer. Hi, I'm Ann Marie Brown for 52 Hannah Drive. I'm here to read into the record, basically, the confusion about this stormwater bill. So when I got it in the mail, I inquired and I got an email from Bob Dennis saying that everyone has to pay it. And there was no explanation. So as some residents and I got together and talked to our neighbors, no one understands what it's for. We thought it was for drains, storm drains, to manage stormwater runoff. Then I was told, no, it's not about that. It's about just stormwater runoff in general, even if you live on a dirt road with a septic tank and you don't use Woodfin water. Because it's all going into the French Broad River. So then, a little more digging, find out that, okay, so there are some drains in town, but those are managed or maintained by the private property owners or the business owners or the DOT. So now the question is, well, what is the town of Woodfin actually maintain? What are they looking for money to maintain? What drains are they looking to maintain? What, what procedures are they looking to implement to help with this maintenance process? Someone told me that they're going to install nets on the French Broad River to catch the cigarette butts in the plastic cups. Okay, so that was an interesting tidbit I hadn't heard before. So there's a lot of confusion over this issue. And if there's public transparency, you know, in government, we would like to see what is actually being done with this money? What drains Woodfin actually maintains? And is that where the money is going? So are we, are we to contact Bob Dennis as the Stormwater Administrator? Are we to contact Shannon? Who are we to contact to get this information so we can see where our money is being spent? Those 24 people who got their bills modified, that's because they knew somebody who told them to call Bob Dennis and then he would lower it. Because a lot of the bills are based on gravel driveways, which are not impervious surface. That's pervious. So then they got reduced. So I called today and left a message for Bob myself to reduce it. So a lot of confusion around the issue. We need more clarification. Whoever can do that, we'd really appreciate it. That form letter really didn't address it very well. Also, it said that, you know, well, it's state and government, federal government mandated. Yes, that's true. But it was mandated four years ago and we didn't have to necessarily tax or bill the residents for it. We could have used other funds. And that was not said in that letter. So any clarification? I know this is not a question and answer period, but that's why I'm reading into the record so the residents, you know, can watch on Facebook and hear what we've been doing behind the scenes. You know, we got about 250 people to sign a petition saying they're not happy with it. So whatever clarification you guys can give, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Hannah, can you have Bob get back in touch with her? Or do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, well, do we want to see if anybody else is in a public comment?
Yes.
Maybe put this all of it at the end.
Okay. Have anybody else, since nobody else has signed up, but does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Okay.
I'm happy to jump in. So the question was asked about where to go for information. Went back and counted, and so there were half a dozen meetings like this that were publicly advertised in the lead-up to the budget adoption, where it was specifically noted that we'd be discussing and did discuss the stormwater utility fee. Laid out all the reasons why it was required and what it would be used for. So that happened. Those meetings were livestreamed. They're also still available online. All the materials from them are available too. So to the extent there's any lack of transparency, I would just refer folks back to the, the half dozen publicly advertised and livestreamed meetings where we fully discussed these issues. Shannon, I think would probably be better to answer the impervious service. That's not a definition that we get to control. Gravel is deemed impervious by the state. And so that's not something that Bob Dennis or anybody with the city or town has any ability to change. Nobody's bill is going to be changed based on a challenge to whether gravel is pervious or impervious. The number that was shown for the number of appeals was not the number of individuals who've had their bills changed. I don't know that anyone has. But certainly, people are not just saying, well, it's gravel. We need to reduce my bill. That's not happening. The, the reason why we adopted this program, for those that aren't going to go back and review the many instances where we publicly discussed it, was because we have to. And so we have a permit that if we don't meet the requirements of it, which are not just cleaning and maintaining storm drains, it's reviewing building permits to make sure that they have adequate stormwater controls throughout the entire town of Woodfin. It's having someone who's a dedicated staff person to go out and, and look for and detect what's called illicit discharges into the waterways. When anybody's dumping pollutants into a waterway that drains into the French Broad River, we have an obligation under our permit to have somebody go out and investigate those. And that's one of the four things we have to do. The other is, of course, maintaining storm drains. And then another is having a public education component. We have to do all of those things under our permit. And so we've had that permit for 40, 30 years at least now, not just four years. It's been decades and decades. And in the recent history, we've just chosen to do none of those things that we're required to do. And we got away with that somehow for a long period of time, until the state recognized that we just were not meeting those obligations and started to fine us. The first fine was $13,000. Those fines can go up to $25,000 a day if we were not meeting our obligations. So rather than pay North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality fines, we decided to actually fund our obligations that we've always had under our stormwater permit. So that's what we're doing now. We've done it in a way that places the burden on those people that have the most impervious surface, not on individual residents. So, I mean, for comparison, if we had done, if we had generated the money to fund our stormwater program by increasing taxes, that would ever look like a tax increase, something along the lines of like three and a quarter cents per property? So an increase of that amount to the rate? That would have generated the same amount, 390,000, that we're generating through the stormwater fee. That would have given a huge break to the people that have the most impervious surface. So for example, if you looked at Silverline Plastics down by the river, if we had just done a tax increase to generate this funding, they would have had an increase of $1,489. Because we're basing it on impervious surface, their bill is $22,165 a year because they have over a million square feet of impervious surface. As a result, the average stormwater fee for individual residents is along the lines of about $40. So by calculating it that way and crafting it that way, which you can go back and see literally how we made the sausage as we decided how to construct that stormwater fee during the half dozen public meetings we had, we've able, we've been able to put the burden on those individuals and property owners that generate the most stormwater and contribute the most to water pollution in the town. So again, I hope that's answered some of the questions. I can't stress enough, if you've got further ones, please go look at the half dozen public meetings we've had where we discussed this and encourage anybody else who has questions to do the same.
I might add one additional clarification, which has to do with, there's been some confusion and understanding of the community about what does the town maintain versus what does an individual maintain? And I think the easiest way to think of it is, if you just think of the stormwater utility like any other utility, you're going to be responsible as an individual property owner for what is on your property, your, your septic, your water line, your sewer line. Something happens on your property, you're going to have to call plumber, they're going to have to fix it. That, that's not unlike the stormwater. The storm, if you have stormwater infrastructure on your private property, you're responsible for that. The town is responsible for that public infrastructure. So somewhere like if it's a water line or sewer line that's in, that's a public line, MSD or Woodfin Water will be responsible. That public entity is responsible for that. Same with the stormwater infrastructure. If it's a public infrastructure, if it's a culvert under a road or a drain system in our public rights of way, the town is responsible for that. Those, if you want to see like what kind of infrastructure we're actually legally responsible for, we, this last year contracted with an engineering firm to identify. So the town didn't even know. I mean, before this last year, we didn't even know all of the infrastructure that we were responsible for. So we contracted with an engineering company to identify, locate, map, and assess the condition of all of that infrastructure. So moving forward, because there has been so much deferred maintenance for many, many years, moving forward, some of this revenue is going to be repairing, cleaning, maintaining, and in some cases, replacing that infrastructure since it's become so degraded. This all should help flooding along the river. It should all help water quality, cleanliness of the, of the river. You know, everybody's stormwater eventually will flow to the same place. And also that's going to the French Broad River. So we do have a responsibility there that is part of our commitment. For more information, I think just about any of our staff at this point can answer a lot of the questions. But I think myself and Bob Dennis and Adrian Eisenhower, our project and facilities director, we're probably the best people to direct those questions to. And if you haven't already, I would check out the town's frequently asked questions. Maybe if you haven't looked at that yet, check out the frequently asked questions. Hopefully that will address some of your questions. If not, give us a call. Be happy to talk with you or meet in the meeting. If it's helpful, you have a part of a community association and you want to come to one of your community meetings, we can come and talk there to help share information. Don't, don't be shy about reaching out. We definitely want people to understand what, where this is coming from and why it's important.
And also, don't, don't stop coming here. I don't want to give that impression at all. We're, we're happy to have this conversation, but it would be far more productive if it's really a conversation. So like if we're ready to engage in the rationale of everything that we looked at in the lead-up to the creation of a fee, that's way more productive than saying, "This many people are unhappy with the creation of a fee." Because you can probably add the seven of us to that number, whatever it was. None of us love having a new fee that we have to pay and voted to impose it on everyone, including ourselves, because we'd worked through those policy rationales and realized that that was the most appropriate and equitable outcome. So it's one thing to say, "I don't, I don't like X." And it's another thing to engage with the rationale on why that change was made. And I absolutely welcome the latter of those because that's, that's how, how, how we can progress as a community.
Staff doesn't want the fee either. We could have avoided it and accomplished what we needed to accomplish in some other way, but unfortunately, there just wasn't any other practical option.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, moving on to new business. Have a public hearing on ordinance 2023, DASHO 24, a zoning text amendment to Chapter 54 of the Town of Woodfin Code of Ordinances to clarify and update definitions, standards, and our uses affecting building and structure, height, non-conformities, and mountain village zoning. Ricky, I think you're going to explain this?
Yeah, I'm going to do my best with it. So we do have some zoning text amendments. They're kind of more of a, say, they're kind of a back of the house or not very exciting type things, but they're very important. So these are all, three items are in Chapter 54 of the zoning chapter. And they are, one, the height definition. So basically, we've had a couple of different definitions of height, one applicable to steep slope areas, and then one for everything else. The everything else one was very complicated in measuring three different sides, measuring three different points, at least on four or five sides and averaging. And when you play that out, it basically is the same as doing high-low average. On the mountain village, we're just clarifying district standards. It's already a CZ district, but we do have some existing areas that are already zoned. It's already a CZ district, but we do have some existing areas that are already zoned mountain village. Uh, so I can walk through those if you want to real quickly. And probably the biggest, uh, bulk change was in the non-conformity section. We have a very short abbreviated non-conformities section. Uh, this would basically expand that and cover more situations. Uh, people typically call those grandfathered items. Uh, it's usually a use or a building that exists before current standards in zoning codes. Like I said, for height, uh, we're gonna utilize or move what we had in steep slope and just apply that to the entire town. That simplifies, makes it easier for the construction community and homeowners to understand. And we're splitting the definition as a building and a structure. Because structures can be water tanks, it can be things that are uninhabited, be a tower. And then, currently, we have under fifty-four, three sixteen, we allow a special use permit to exceed the height. Uh, I think with the CZ section Shannon had worked on before I arrived, uh, it clarifies that you can obtain a modification of height through the CZ process. So, we're gonna remove that confusing section. And just to clarify, chapter fifty-four limits height to thirty-five feet town-wide under that section listed. So, it just explicitly, explicitly says thirty-five feet. So, you don't have to worry about the definition not mentioned in it. On the mountain village side of the things, um, so we've already allow, uh, if you're in mountain village, you can do what's allowed by right listed in permitted use table. Mostly, that's residential uses like one, two-family. Uh, you'll still be subject to anything that requires a CZ or SUP as normally applied to any other district. Um, one substantial change is we're changing the dis- density to a maximum of eight units. Right now, that reads as a minimum of eight units. And as everybody looks at the map, you notice that mountain village is in pretty rugged territory already. Uh, clarify landscape standards, design architectural standards, open space connectivity. Uh, I believe you got your red lines included in the packet. Uh, we can talk about that, but I think, like, one thing, design architectural, remove things related to single-family, um, and kind of beefed up things as a commercial.
I've got one on, on this one. Do we, so before we implemented a comprehensive CZ process for all large developments, I believe we also just said that anything in mountain village has to go through the CZ process. Did we ever get rid of that now that we have the standard for large developments? Or do we still have everything in mountain village going through a CZ?
Uh, well, I mean, we've not really had anything come through on mountain village. I mean, if there's one, it's maybe just a house, so it.
It does clarify, this amendment clarifies.
Okay, it did, okay.
We, we would have allowed, um, um, projects under a certain scale to go through without having to be a CZ, but, but we clarified the language to make that more specific. So, if you're under that large project threshold, you know, and you meet all of the other requirements in mountain village, you don't need a CZ, um, but anything, you know, over twenty units would require.
Yeah. I think that makes sense. I mean, it's gonna just put a whole lot more work on you all if you had it for everything in that district, so.
Would duplexes be allowed in mountain village?
I can check, but I believe so. Yeah, I can look at the table.
You think so?
Yeah, I believe so, because it's a pretty intense district.
We allow multi-family, so we would allow.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I just, eight units per acre, so you had two fourplexes.
Yeah.
That's all you could do.
Well, if, if you're under that threshold, so almost all mountain village projects are larger developments. And if, and most of our projects are not, I, I don't know how some of the other mountain village projects got permitted because they didn't meet the minimum eight units an acre standard. So, I don't think any of our existing mountain village developments were over eight units an acre. So, this, this seems to more accurately, accurately reflect what can be won. But if you wanted to do, say, a twenty-five unit apartment building or town development, you could do that, but it's gonna trigger the, um, the conditional zoning process, and that process allows for modification of the densities to.
Because I was thinking, two fourplexes on the acre, that, that seemed like a pretty good restriction.
Yeah. Now, keep in mind, as Ricky said, most mountain villages are subject to steep slopes, so they're probably limited in density anyway.
I got you.
So, um, steep slopes might prevent them from getting eight units up there, um, just depending on the conditions.
And, and usually topography, and then you've still got a park, and you got stormwater, so there's other requirements, so. So, anyway, if there's other questions, I keep, I can keep going, or we can kick on to non-conformities? Okay. Thank you, Shannon. So, non-conformities, uh, like I said, it, it's, if you looked at the red line, we're pretty thin on what we address. It was mostly non-conforming uses and makes a passing mention, I think maybe on mobile homes. Uh, so, we tried, worked with Shannon real closely on this one, tried to add a lot more definitions, uh, in there, tried to expand, uh, the situations covered, and even kind of tie back to like our lighting ordinance and our sign ordinance, just making a reference that you would go to those chapters about the non-conformity relating to lighting or signs for that applicable chap- chapter. Uh, you know, one of the things too is clarify there on mobile homes as well as on individual lots. So, just wanted to make sure that it's all in one nice package. It's one of these things that, um, i- if you don't deal with it, it's not very important, but when you actually have to deal with like an existing building that's over, in a setback, or they want to add on, or this existing use, uh, there's a lot of, uh, dials and knobs you're turning and rereading in that. So, it's good to have that explicit, have the definitions, have everything addressed with, whether it be a setback violation or a use violation. Uh, it's one of these you kind of shoot from the hip here. I don't know if, if y'all had questions on that specifically, like, on non-conformities, like, we could go.
It really helped having the red line version.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that.
That makes such a big difference.
Yeah. It's a, it's one of them, you have to kind of read through this section to understand it. I don't know if you had anything in particular. I mean, me and Shannon have been living and eating this for a couple months, and.
I did, with the mobile homes, that I know has always been questioned when they're in kind of rough shape too. Um, what are the standards required? I think it said by, uh, one of the state departments for those, um, like if you are replacing a mobile home? Can't remember exactly in the.
Well, I mean, what we're addressing is if you're like in R seven or a single wide, it just clarifies that you can replace the single wide in basically the same place or in that approximate area, just so long as you don't create a new setback violation. So, you can't get closer to a property line or a right-of-way.
Okay, I thought it related to meeting particular standards for the home in there as well.
It, that language was, it's actually, there are requirements at the state level.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
And what a mobile home can be replaced with, so that's not new, we're, that's just being.
I figured it came from the state, but it's just not something I'm that familiar with.
The, the simple explanation regarding mobile homes and other non-conformities is, right now, as Ricky mentioned, the, the code is really ambiguous, and so people don't understand what their rights are. We don't understand what their rights are when we're kind of, whether we need some clarity. But we tried, but we tried, particularly for mobile homes, to give them the maximum amount of flexibility. A lot of codes try to zone mobile homes out. We are not doing that, so.
Right.
Yeah, things that we want to encourage that upgrade, because there are a lot of fifty, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, early Stadby's models out there. And we want to make sure that, uh, private landowners, whether they own the property, or they're the tenant, or somebody owns and rents land, that there's some assurance that they can replace that and upgrade to something much newer, more energy efficient, uh, probably better standards, because there's a lot of substandard housing out there. And if you've got that certainty that you can replace it, then it does encourage some updating.
Thank you.
So, uh, planning board of adjustment did go through this. They've looked at it a couple times in the August meeting, and then again in September. This was one that was pushed forward. Uh, they voted seven to zero to approve this or recommend approval to y'all. And we concur that, especially like non-conformities, as Shannon said, providing a lot more clarity in the code is helpful. And the height will help make Marie's life a lot easier on day-to-day. And with that, I'll let, let you, I guess, open up the floor for public.
Any questions from the board before I open this public hearing? Okay, hearing done, I will open this public hearing at, uh, six forty-one. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Ask again, do we have anyone wishes to speak? One more time, do we have anyone wishes to speak? Hearing done, I'll close this public hearing at, uh, six forty-two P.M. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the proposed text amendment and find that it is reasonable in the public interest, is consistent with the Town of Woodfin Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, provides additional clarity and predictability to development regulation, uh, requirements, thereby supporting economic development. Two, ensures that the town's planning, zoning, and permitting processes facilitate sustained and positive development and support the needs of businesses and industry. And three, preserve and enhance Woodfin's open space, natural environment, and community character.
Hey, you've heard the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Shannon, do we need to have a closing? Oh, okay. We, have any other business from the board?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.